I know it's 9:25 and we did, I did call for session to resume at 9:00. So this morning, we have Senator Ogden, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Titegri, Senator Rispicio, one, two, three, four, five, six of us here. Sergeant at Arms is going to ask you, please call the senators in. We are going to be voting this morning. Alejandra Juan is called to order. Recognize Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we bring Bill 488 back to committee. It's in the voting file right now, at the request of the author of the bill and the chairman will have jurisdiction over that issue.
On that motion then, without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My second notwithstanding motion is to bring the engrossed version of Bill 54 back to the top of the second reading file for purposes of making one amendment.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with Bill 54, I have an amendment and it's been, it's provided to each member in writing and it simply is to be consistent with the constitutional ruling Roe v. Wade when dealing with this very sensitive issue of abortion. And the amendment is to insert the words in subsection A1, "To save the life or preserve the health of the mother or the fetus," to insert the words "mother."
On that amendment, no objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to speak any further on this bill. We've really deliberated this to the extent possible. And so I moved that Bill 54 be placed in the voting file and I further moved that we be allowed to vote on this bill without engrossment.
On that motion then, without any objections, ordered. Can we please make sure that we call all the members in to vote? Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we bring the engrossed version of Bill 54 back to the top of the second reading file.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, earlier I passed out an amendment that sought to amend Bill 54 and in consultation with the author, and thank you for allowing the motion and I thank the body for allowing this bill to be further amended. On the amendment that I passed, yeah, I'm going to, yeah. Yeah, on this amendment that I passed out, Madam Speaker, I moved to strike out the words in 9-1, actually number, item 1, strike out the words "or preserve the health." So the new sentence would read, "Save the life of a mother or the fetus."
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And this time, again, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that I, that we bring this bill back to the voting file and that we vote without engrossment.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Ray, I'm really going to miss that. I try, I do. I try to talk before the voting.
I know, I know.
Okay, senators, we are voting, so I ask that please take your seats. Anybody else who shouldn't be in the hall should leave, except for the pages. We are in the voting file and the first bill on the voting file will be Bill Number 306-30COR.
Bill Number 306-30COR introduced by F.B. Ogden Jr. An act to resume lot number 1, block 2 of the subdivision of Lot 1098 remainder located in the municipality of Baragada Guam for the residential, from residential to commercial to allow for greater application and use of the property in the surrounding areas.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay, okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Madam Speaker also moved to excuse Senator BJ Cruz from voting.
He was, yes, he was earlier. Thank you though. Thank you for thinking, thinking of him. Okay, we are voting, so we'll continue. Senator Tenorio, you did vote, right? Okay. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 306-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 306-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 364-30COR.
Bill Number 364-30COR substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen. An act amend section 6 of Public Law 24-141 relative to event admissions assessment to the Guam Raceway Park.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 364-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 364-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 364-30COR substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen. An act amend section 6 of Public Law 24-141 relative to event admissions assessment to the Guam Raceway Park. Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 364-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 364-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 431-30COR.
Bill Number 431-30COR amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen, Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act amend section 4302B of chapter 4, article 3, title 4 Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing utilization and cost information to current and prospective health insurance companies who provide health care coverage to government of Guam employees and retirees.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 431-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 431-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 438-30COR.
Bill Number 438-30COR, a substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen, TR Munia Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to add new subsections 5, 6, 7, and 8 to section 13109A, chapter 13 of title 2 Guam Code Annotated, relative to section 30 funds and other federal matters.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Bill Number 438.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Senator Cruz.
Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Substitute bill Number 438-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill Number 438-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 442-30COR.
Bill Number 442-30COR, a substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, introduced by TC Ada. An act to authorize the extension of the term of the lease between the Port Authority of Guam and the Cementon Micronesia LLC for a term of up to 30 years.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Substitute bill Number 442-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill Number 442-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 450-30LS.
Bill Number 450-30LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen, Talu Titegri, TR Munia Barnes. An act amend section 8150 of article 1, chapter 8, title 4 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to investments in bonds of United States and federal instrumentalities.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 450-30LS received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 450-30LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 461-30LS.
Bill Number 461-30LS, a substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Aviation, Housing and Recreation and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthers, DPA, TR Munia Barnes. An act to add a new article to chapter 40 of title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a community partnership council CPC for the purposes of identifying sites and funding for the construction of multipurpose centers for every village which shall be known as the Community Partnership Act of 2010.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 461-30LS received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 461-30LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 463-30COR.
Bill Number 463-30COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, TR Munia Barnes. An act to repeal and reenact session 34152 of article 1, chapter 34, title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to dispersing child support payments by electronic means.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Yes.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Aye.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat. Pass. Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Okay.
Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill Number 463-30COR received 13 ye votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Bill Number 463-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 466-30COR.
Bill Number 466-30COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior. An act amend section 77109, chapter 77, title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the qualifications for the appointment of the chief of police.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Bill Number 466-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 466-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 467-30COR.
Bill Number 467-30COR introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior. An act amend subsection A of section 3107 of article 1, chapter 3 of title 22 Guam Code Annotated, relative to compensation for public safety personnel who perform work in shifts.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
I'm good.
Bill Number 467-30LS received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 467-30LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 473-30COR.
Bill Number 473-30COR, a substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services and Judiciary and amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada, F.B. Ogden Jr., Judith T. Wampat, EDD, Adolfo B. Palacios Senior, VC Panglinen, Judith P. Guthers, DPA. An act to reprogram and appropriate funds from the limited obligation highway bonds authorized by public loan 19-2 relative to improving the availability of Department of Public Works DPW school buses by the refurbishing of selected school buses performing overdue preventative maintenance services, purchasing of tools and equipment for bus maintenance, and the repairing of facilities at DPW bus substations, and to repair vehicles of the Guam Police Department and the Guam Fire Department.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavell.
Aye.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Panglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rispicio.
Yes.
Senator Titegri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampat. Substitute bill Number 473-30COR received 14 ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill Number 473-30COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 474-30COR. 473 we just did, this is 474. Not 480 first? No.
480.
480.
480.
What number?
480.
Yeah, 480.
No, 488, remember we took out.
Yeah.
We pulled it.
We did.
Yeah, we pulled it out and sent back to the committee.
Which one?
488.
488?
Yeah. That went back to the committee. So that's why we're now on 474.
Bill Number 474-30COR, a substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services and Judiciary and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Talu Titegri, F.B. Ogden Jr., TC Ada, RJ Rispicio, VC Panglinen, TR Munia Barnes, Judith P. Guthers and others. An act to reprogram the sum of $1,050,000 from unused bond proceeds to the Department of Public Works for the paving of village streets and the repair of damages to village streets as a result of traffic diversions related to ongoing road construction projects.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
Pass.
Senator VA Ada.
Pass.
Senator Ogden.
Okay.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator TC Ada.
Substitute bill number four seventy-four dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number four seventy-four dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four seventy-nine dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four seventy-nine dash thirty C O R, substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, and amended on the floor, introduced by FB Uggan Junior, VC Pangalinen, FF Blas Junior, Judith T. Guthardts DPA, TR Munya Barnes. An act amend subsection S of section eighty-one zero nine, chapter eighty, division four, title ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending the borrowing ability of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority by including the authorization to also enter into revolving loan funds and direct loans.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Substitute bill number four seventy-nine dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Substitute bill number four seventy-nine dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four fifty-three dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four fifty-three dash thirty C O R, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriation, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Pangalinen, Judith P. Guthardts DPA. An act approved the official zoning map of F three sixty-seven S fifty-two, that was a Montes planning area and all related zoning amendments.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Substitute bill number four fifty-three dash thirty L S, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absent- absence. Substitute bill number four fifty-three dash thirty L S is duly passed by this body. Substitute bill number three sev- I mean, bill number three seventy-two dash thirty C O R.
Bill number three seventy-two dash thirty C O R, as substituted on the floor, introduced by BJF Cruz, an act amend section thirteen two zero one B of Article Two, Chapter Thirteen, Title Nineteen of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the reporting of suspected child abuse or neglect by clerical personnel of churches or other religious organizations.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada.
One moment before the vote starts, Senator.
Yeah, Senator Uggan just pointed out this should be, um, cler- clerical. Not clerical, uh, clerical. Clergy personnel. It's a technical correction, but just.
Okay, yes, duly duly noted, and the clerks and... Senators, we are still voting, please, there must be order.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good. I'm good.
Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui.
Substitute bill number three seventy-two dash thirty C O R, received ten ye votes, four nays, and one excused absence. Substitute bill number three seventy-two dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four zero one dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four zero one dash thirty C O R, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, TR Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section eight zero one zero five E to chapter eighty of Title Twenty-one Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of property under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Cavell. Oh, there you are.
Four zero one dash thirty.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good. Bill number four zero one dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number four zero one dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four zero two dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four zero two dash thirty C O R, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, TR Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section eight zero one zero five F to chapter eighty of Title Twenty-one Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of property under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Bill number four zero two dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes, one excused absence. Bill number four zero two dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four zero three dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four zero three dash thirty C O R, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, TR Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section eight zero one zero five G to chapter eighty of Title Twenty-one Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of property under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Bill number four zero three dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes, one excused absence. Bill number four zero three dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four fifty-nine dash thirty C O R.
Bill number four fifty-nine dash thirty C O R, as amended on the floor, introduced by VC Pangalinen, FB Uggan Junior, TC Ada, an act amend section five one eight two one A of Article Eight, Chapter Fifty-one of Title Ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to the use of proceeds of sales of bonds.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator VA Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Espaldon. Senator Tadegui. Senator VA Ada.
Bill number four fifty-nine dash thirty C O R, received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number four fifty-nine dash thirty C O R is duly passed by this body. Bill number four forty-six dash thirty L S.
Bill number four forty-six dash thirty L S, substituted by Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, FB Uggan Junior, TR Munya Barnes, JB, Espaldon, Judith P. Guthardts DPA. An act authorized the funding for the construction of the University of Guam Student Services Center and the annexed building for the School of Engineering, for the extension of the Guam Community College GCC Rigorius G Paris Crime Lab Building, and for the renovation and hardening of GCC Building One Hundred and Two Hundred.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Guthardts. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampad?
Oka.
Senator Blas? Senator Cavell? Senator Espaldon? Senator Tadegui? Senator Tenorio? Senator Blas? Senator Cavell?
Yes.
Senator Tadegui? Senator Tenorio? Bill Number 446-30LS, received 9 yea votes, 5 nay votes, and 1 excused absence. Bill Number 446-30LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 54-30-COR.
Bill Number 54-30-COR, as submitted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by E. JV Cavell, TR Munia Barnes, F. F. Blas Jr., Judith P. Guthers, DPA, R. J. Rispecio. An act to add a new section, 321A.1, to Chapter 3, Article 2 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the informed consent requirement for a woman considering an abortion and to sign the Act as the Women's Reproductive Health Information Act of 2010.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes.
Senator Uggan?
Oka.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavell?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oka.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen? Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tadegui?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
I'm sorry, 54?
Yes, 54. Yes? Speaker Wampad?
Oka.
Senator Tadegui?
Yes.
Substitute Bill Number 54-30-COR, received 13 yays, 1 nay vote, 1 excused absence. Substitute Bill Number 54-30-COR is duly passed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lain Wa Han, should vetoed Bill Number 271 be overridden?
Vetoed Bill Number 271-30LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by Adofa B. Palacios Senior, Judith P. Guthers, DPA, TC Ada, and others. An act to repeal section 77108, Chapter 77, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, authority to hire attorney, and to repeal section 3104, Chapter 3, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing provisions for the Attorney General to provide legal services to the Guam Police Department and relative to the positions of Fire Chief and Chief of Police, and for other purposes.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes.
Senator Uggan?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavell?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oka.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tadegui?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampad?
Oka.
On the matter of vetoed Bill 271-30-COR, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, the votes are 14 yays and 1 excused absence. Bill Number 271-30-COR is overridden by Imina Tenta and Alejes La Tron Guahan. We should be on the confirmations. Do we have the confirmation sheet? On the appointment of Ms. Helen M. Bordalhu to serve as a member of Guahan Historic Preservation Review Board, oh, in favor, please raise your right hand or your hands. She received, Ms. Helen Bordalhu received unanimous support to serve as a member of Guahan Historic Preservation Review Board, so she's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment, now, this is going to be roll call, on the appointment of Mr. J. Peter Roberto to serve as Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, we're going to ask for a roll call. Because it's a director position. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes.
Senator Uggan?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cavell?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Are you?
I agree. Yes, we understand. Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthers?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oka.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Are you?
Senator Rispecio? Senator Tadegui?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Speaker Wampad?
Oka.
On the appointment, then, on the matter of Mr. Peter, Peter, I mean, J. Peter Roberto to serve as Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services, he received 14 yea votes and 1 excused absence. Mr. J. Peter Roberto then is duly confirmed by this body to serve as Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. On the appointment of Mrs. Priscilla T. Tunca to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Priscilla T. Tunca received unanimous support to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, so she's duly confirmed by this body. That's it on the voting list. A. Centery Rispecio, you are recognized for motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, having exhausted 26 items on the agenda, which is, and being exhausted in one week, which is usually our usual pace here for the past two years, please permit me to recognize the central staff, the Committee on Rules, the various standing committees, every single senatorial office for having these bills vetted and properly prepared. So when it comes to the floor, there's very little or no deliberation because our senators have been working closely with the other senators and all the individual staff. And I just wanted to make that recognition so that all the hard work does not go unrecognized. And there is a reason to celebrate on top of this kind of a very aggressive agenda that you've laid out over the last, over the past two years, a very special reason to celebrate today, Madam Speaker, is because it's our clerk's birthday, one of our attaches. And if you will permit me to ask Senator Telo Tadegui to do the honors of singing a happy birthday. She actually asked that she be the one to sing happy birthday. No, I asked her. I asked her, Madam Speaker, so...
We all agree because you have a beautiful voice.
Yeah, and it's a very special day for our clerk. I object to Senator Guthers being the backup. And turn your mic off.
Senators, okay, let's...
I just wanted to correct that, Madam Speaker. I am under the weather, but I'll be more, she asked me, and I'll be more than happy because I too would like to give something to this body and especially to the clerks up here. So, as everybody sings along with me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Pat. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Pat.
And I...
Okay, senators, yet we still have...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
I thought we were going to have a brief extension of remarks for, one member had asked.
Okay. Yeah, I would draw the motion and defer to brief extension of remarks.
Yes, but she wants, she asked if she can do it this month.
Good night.
Please have a seat.
Okay, considering the situation, Madam Speaker, I did write something out just to give my thanks and to touch on my experience as a first-term senator here at the legislature. And it's truly meant when I say, you know, sister and brother, because they have treated me nothing less than a sister or brother. I didn't bring my speech today, considering I was in a rush. But each one of you, my colleagues, has been so dear to me. And I wrote something for each of you. See if I can remember it now with this cold in my head. And so I guess I'll start with my Republican colleagues, especially the rookie and the baby of the group where I was once. Continue, continue to reach out to the other senators. You've been a good friend, Tony, and definitely can make me laugh. Senator Espaldon, we go back since the disco days. And we are still discoing back here all the time when I needed that little push. And I wanted to thank you for all you've done and helped and assisted me. Senator Cavell, if there was ever a time I needed someone to yell at me, and it, I took it very well coming from you, considering we've been friends for many years, but I learned something. Learned to be quiet. You taught me that. And actually, that is a good rule, sometimes. But you've done more for me to move forward and progress, and I thank you for your leadership as our minority leader. Senator Frank Blas, if Speaker in Pinco, who I would have loved to have the opportunity to be here and work beside, I think you brought his message across and taught me what he would have showed me. Thank you for that. To my Democratic colleagues who I, oh, Ray Bariscon? Ray, thank you for all the rules. And all the motions. But to my Democratic colleagues who, many of you already claimed me as a Democrat. I thank you for that. I thank you for that. Senator Frank, again, your smile, your energy, it's amazing. I will take that with me. Senator Tina Munia Barnes, many God's blessings. Thank you for constantly blessing me. Senator Tom Ada? Thank you for when I didn't understand and I would move right over next to you and ask you a question. And you were so gracious to help me through this, literally holding my hand from day one. Thank you. Senator Palacios? I mean, if there's ever a Santa Claus in this legislature, it's you. Jolly, happy, always willing to help, and always, always willing to give. Thank you so much. Senator Guthers? You have taught me a great lesson. Many times, people will come to you and yell at you and scream at you, but you taught me to how to be gracious, to stop and listen to someone, and that not necessarily yelling back is what's going to help at all. But by calming a person down and letting them know that it's okay, you have taught me that. Thank you. Rory? I have to share. Rory has been my best friend, him and his wife, has been there for me many times. And one thing that is so true is his ability to try and be fair with everybody. And he does realize that some circumstances, you have to give in a little bit. But I can tell you countless times I've had to call him up and to guide me through certain things, through central files, but most especially that even though we all go through what we do here at the legislature, and even though we agree to disagree and all those kind words that we say to each other when we get mad, Rory, you have taught me that at the end, you always are going to be a friend, and that you showed me that bills come and go, but friendships don't. And no matter how people see us as looking like we're arguing, at the end of the day, it's very true, we stay friends. Did I talk about Ben yet? You have been my secret idol, my person I've looked up to. And I promised I would never cry in this legislature, and I didn't, until you spoke up on the day that you were talking about my last bill. You made me cry for the first time. And it was so important that I was accepted by you, Speaker Ben, and that you saw the work that I did meant more to me than anything, that you saw that. Madam Speaker, you have been the best speaker I've ever... I've ever had. Thank you for allowing me to come to your home, to knock on your door at any time of the day, and letting me in. Thank you so much for that. You are truly one who will keep the peace in this legislature. Thank you for putting up with my diva-ness. And truly, I know by my colleagues as well, Madam Speaker, you truly are a person to keep the peace and keep everybody harmonious. Thank you for that guidance. Si dos mase, adonkulu si dos mase to all of you guys. Oh, of course. But most especially, at the end, I'm not who I was, I put fourteen bills. Thank you for today. This is my fourteenth bill passed, if it wasn't without my staff. And I want to thank each and every one of them. Ed Lee, Michael Blumagut, Trish, and Patty, and Roland Affleck from my staff. Thank you so much. And yes, they are very good. If you like what I did, then consider picking them up, everybody. Somebody. To the staff here again, adonkulu si dos mase. And thank you for laughing with me and not at me every time I make a mistake. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone. God bless us. God bless Guam. Thank you.
Senator Rispicio?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm sure every single member of this body joins me and agrees with me when we say that just as much as Senator Titegui highlighted what we brought to her and for her over the last two years, I think we can say without reservation that she brought a lot to this body that we certainly can learn from and take with us in the next term. What I've learned from you, Senator Titegui, is that if you are persistent enough, if you show up to work enough, and never let down on why you feel so passionately about the things you want to do, you can really have a very successful legislative record. And indeed, you do. You can take with you, knowing that you've worked very hard. And who would have thought that you would, or anyone for that matter, Madam Speaker, would have been successful in securing an appropriation to pave a road that a developer was responsible for paving. But because of Senator Titegui's passion and for her letting us know that we must never take our eye on the prize, and regardless of how those families found themselves in such an unfortunate situation, that's irrelevant. But what's more relevant and has to remain relevant is that this government has an obligation to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of this island community. And so I appreciate Senator Titegui's comments and her recollection of what happened over the last two years. And I want to tell her on behalf of all of us that whoever God finds you in the next term, January, we definitely would support. I mean, I, I know that we have an incoming administration, and you certainly have a lot of talent, that I hope that the incoming administration is committed to selecting the best and the brightest. Hint, hint. And that... And that should... No pressure. But I think this is one legislative confirmation that might be easy, no doubt. But having said that, Madam Speaker, I want to thank the good senator for her contribution to this legislature. And I want to assure you that what we've learned from you will carry forward into the next term. So having said that, I move that we adjourn subject to call of the Speaker.
On that motion, without any objection, this legislature is adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.